For the city of Los Alamos, may we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Chris Samo.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Churco.
Here.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Here.
Okay, thank you. And then before we start with the pledge, I'm going to ask, in terms of city manager less, would you introduce your staff? Let me introduce City Clerk Wendy Quintenar, our city attorney, Michael Dought, and then if you can introduce your staff that's here, please.
Yes, thank you, honorable mayor councilmembers. We have Chief Junius in attendance tonight. We also have our finance director, Eric Hendrickson. We have our recreation manager, Ron Noda. We have our captain, Chris Carr, in attendance. We also have our recreation, the recreation manager, Emily Noda. We also have our -- he caught me off guard a little bit.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We also have our city engineer, Dave Hunt, in attendance. We have our fire chief, Ron Roberts, in attendance. And we also have Chelsea in attendance tonight as well. She is our executive secretary.
Great, thank you. And then with that, we'll go ahead and go into the pledge, which will be led by Councilmember Gross and the invocation by Mayor Pro Tem Murphy. Would you please stand and remain standing for the invocation?
Please join me in the salute to our great nation. Ready?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we ask your blessing as we meet here tonight to do the city's business. Please give us wisdom to take care of our citizens. As always, we pray for our first responders. In the Lord's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, council, if you wouldn't mind joining me up front for a few recognitions. So, first up, we have the United Water Polo Club 14U girls team who earned the bronze medal at the 2019 Junior Olympics. How about, is the coach here, if you wouldn't mind, coming up here and maybe call?
Sure.
Well, we have certificates. I guess we can just call them out. Then you can help hand them out, if you wouldn't mind. First up, we have Madison, oh, Sean? Sean Nolan? And then Madison Ravello? Okay. Willis Massey? Willis, please come forward. Joel's not here?
Yes, she is.
Okay. And then we've got Rachel Kirchner. Taylor Donato. Jasmine Lopez. Sidney Bergstrom. Haley Bergstrom. Tess Ravello. Oh. Well, how about Isabel Valaika? Okay, we'll introduce somebody. Josephine Niz.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, ladies, would you mind coming up here for a photo? Please come in front of us. There we go. Big smile. Congratulations. Coach, want to say a few words?
To the mayor and city council, thank you for recognizing us tonight. The United Water Polo Club was founded in Los Alamos in 2007. This marks our first medal for our 14-and-under girls team. It's also the highest placement of any of our girls teams. Of the 15 girls that are on the roster, 12 of them go to Los Alamos schools. The girls that actually aren't here tonight are playing varsity right now for Los Al down in Orange County. So, we're excited that the council recognized us tonight because this is our hometown and this is our home club. So, you know, the girls go to McAuliffe Oaks, St. Hagwig, over at Los Al. It's an excitement, or it's a privilege to be in here and be recognized for the hard work these girls put in. A lot of these girls worked out four nights a week and then did swim team two nights a week. So, we're talking thousands of yards during the whole year. The season started in September, had to go all the way to the end of July, same time that they were balancing schoolwork. Almost all of them were on honor roll, getting good grades. So, we're extremely proud of them. And like I said, thank you for recognizing us tonight.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Coach, congratulations. Okay, next up, we're going to have a proclamation for National Preparedness Month. And we're going to have Chief Acosta. And I'm going to ask Councilmember Hasselbrink, who serves us on the OCFA board, she's the vice chair, and so I want her to at least present this to Chief Acosta.
Okay. So, September 2019, this is National Preparedness Month. So, any emergency declarations, making sure that we're prepared. And we're very happy that we now are getting more prepared. We have our newly hired emergency services coordinator. Is that what you are now?
Yeah.
Okay, there you go. We kidnapped him. He was our division chief for Orange County Fire Authority for our city. And he retired a few months ago. And we talked to his wife. And we got him hired over here. So, if you need any employment, talk to the spouses first, and it usually happens. So, we're very happy. He's going to be coordinating all of our disaster preparedness and making sure as a city that we're ready and able to face any disasters that might be coming our way. So, I want to present this to Robert Acosta, and I'll let you give a few words.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. September is national, oh, Mr. Mayor, council, city staff, thank you very much. September is National Preparedness Month nationwide. It's something that's recognized, and it's something that's near and dear to my heart and the cities also. So, looking forward to joining this team in the future. We're coming at three priorities right off the bat, is to help the community be prepared for an emergency, help the city staff be ready personally for an emergency, and then also probably the most important is the ability to have a continuity of operations and have this, have it of well-functioning EOC, and being able to take care of the citizens in case of an emergency. Like the councilwoman said, I almost said mayor, I came over from Orange County Fire Authority. I was a division chief here for a while. I know the community real well. That relationship's going to lend itself real well. Chief Roberts already has been very instrumental in helping us with some high-quality maps for our EOC. So, that partnership's going to continue to help us, help out the city and help out the organization. So, thank you.
Okay, next. This is really special because we delayed this a month because Mayor Pro Tem Murphy couldn't be here. So, now that you're here, how about you want to say something about this next one?
Please. Come on up, please. This is our ex-city manager. I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Brett.
My name is Brett.
Brett, okay, thank you. Thank you. And you were city manager?
Yes.
I would have thought I'd seen you around here every once in a while. And you were here for six months?
Or years.
Six years?
Yeah, six years.
Nobody survives six years here in this job. You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. In all seriousness, Brett came at a time where we'd had 12 city managers in 12 years, brought stability, was here for six years, and is now retired. You're much too young to be retired. But working another job, so we're...
I was 13 when I started.
I wasn't ready for your joke. But so, the city would like to present you with this plaque and this signed proclamation over here, since you don't have enough stuff on your walls. And if you'd like to say a few words?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem Murphy. Appreciate that. First of all, I want to thank this fantastic community, city of Los Alamos. And I didn't cry before. I'm not going to cry tonight either. The residents, the businesses, this community is just top-notch. It's the best in Orange County, best in California. And I want to thank the city council. I've worked with all of them a long time. And I appreciate the support that you've given me and the staff, and the fact that all of you get along.
Can I interrupt, though?
Yes, sir.
Could we have a chance to talk before you finish?
Sure.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
He gave me them.
Yeah, I know, I know. But I wanted to, I wanted to pass, I'm sorry to interrupt the former city manager here, but with, you know, we don't want to let him just get away so easily. We all get to get a shot in, our last shot to our city managers. Mark, did you want to say anything about?
Sure. So, I'm the new guy, or the guy with at least tenure on the city council. But I did work with Brett for a couple of years. And I think I said this a couple of months ago when you announced. It's been a true pleasure to work with you. You will be missed. And thank you for all your guidance and help and everything that you did for the city. Appreciate it.
Well, I think we've had an opportunity at your going-away party to say things. But now that you've got a new job, and we're expecting you to treat us with fair faith and help a little bit of reduction from HDL on our contract. So, good luck.
I'll be nice, I promise. You know, we just, we've created a great friendship. When I was mayor in 2017, we went through some pretty horrific stuff together as a city. I had no idea what I was doing as mayor, and you kind of walked me through it, let me be unfiltered, and gave me honesty and guidance, as hopefully I did for you, too. And I think just all of us, we have a great partnership and a teamwork. And you brought us from a very unstable time, six years ago, to a level of stability. You brought on staff that are top-notch, that could go other places and choose to be here because of the level of stability and respect that you brought to our city. You're here. Your kids go to school here. So, I know you're not going far away. And I know that you treated the city as though it was your own, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
And I'm not going to be last. We're going to ask council member, Assemblymember Deeps' representative. Hang on, let me give my talk, and I'll call you up, Colin, in a minute. So, I have this sort of melancholy about the departure of Brett because I was mayor when we hired him, and it was a tough sell because, as Councilmember Hasselbrink was saying, it was pretty tough times for us. We were very unstable, as Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Murphy had said, you know, 12 city managers in 12 years, whatever the count was. It was very contentious that we had in this council. So, we had to really do a lot of hard sell with Brett and convince him that we could change. And he was certainly a agent of change for this city, and it was all for the best. And being mayor then, and hiring him, and now being mayor when he's leaving, is really just kind of the bookends of sort of a melancholy. I'm glad you're here. I'm glad that you've served us. I know you're going to go on to bigger and better things. But, gosh, the imprint that you leave behind will carry us forward and serve the community well. And I hope that we, as council and future councils, will remember that it can be done. From the contention that we had, quarreling, bickering about not important things, but ultimately, we all had the heart for the city. And I think that's really starting to shine in this council and prior with Brett's, you know, steady guidance with the staff here, keeping things on an even keel. So, Brett, I'm going to miss you. Really wish you the best. And then with that, I'm going to ask Colin Edwards, if you wouldn't come up here and say a few words.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Colin, from the office of Assemblyman Tyler Deep, who has the pleasure of representing Los Alamos in Sacramento. And for you, Brett, thanks for everything over the last six years that you've done for the city. You've been a great friend to our office and helping us out with all sorts of projects. So, best of luck in your retirement. I know it'll be fun. I'm jealous. I'm ready to retire, too. But so, on behalf of Assemblyman Deep and the whole state legislature, congratulations, Senator.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, you want to finish?
Now that it's a lot tougher to speak, now that you have all spoken, but I appreciate, I appreciate all the kind words that you have said. And I was saying, this city council, I'm proud of the accomplishments that this council has made. And I'm proud of the part that I was able to play with it, and teamwork and fantastic working together. The executive staff that's here that I've worked with is just the best that I've ever worked with. And it's not saying goodbye to all of you. Chelsea makes sure that I don't say goodbye ever. So, I feel like I'm still here. My girls are still here. As Councilmember Hasselbrink said, I have one at Oak Middle School, one at the high school. I'm still living in Seal Beach. So, you will see me around on a regular basis. And I'm here to help with anybody that wants my help as well. And just so proud to be able to call Los Alamos my home, and that's the way I feel. And thank you all so very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, I guess next, we're going to have cake, is that will be next on the agenda. So, we'll take a recess. We're going to have cake celebration. And so, all the students who are here, you might get your papers signed, but do enjoy the cake as well. And so, yeah, and then, of course, stay for the meeting. So, 10-minute recess. Go back, call back to order. Next up on the agenda is oral communication. So, at this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker. And I do have a few blue cards here. So, I'll just take them in the order I've got them. So, Linda Townsend, please come forward. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Linda Townsend. I live at 11132 Mendorah Street in Los Alamos. And I've lived here since June of 1992. First, I'd like to read a letter from a neighbor who was unable to be here tonight. This is on the subject of the proposed parking, permit parking in New Dutch Haven. Dear councilmembers, my name is Stan Davidson, and along with my wife, we have lived in New Dutch Haven for the past 33 years. I am writing you to ask that you reconsider your decision to expand and start enforcement of permit parking in New Dutch Haven. It is not needed, not wanted, very poorly rolled out, and explained to the homeowners living in New Dutch Haven. While it is true that there are permit parking-only signs posted on the perimeter streets of Mendorah, Antietam, and Bennington, and not on the interior streets, there has never been a parking problem for as long as we have lived here. In fact, Captain Carr stated that there have been no complaints nor citations for at least three years. Why create a problem where there isn't one? Kudos to Randy Hill and his traffic committee, when they looked into parking problems in New Dutch Haven, found none, and recommended to the council that there is no need for permits here. They also understood that there is a difference between New Dutch Haven and Carrier Row where there might be a problem, although I believe that there are better ways to solve the small problem there. What you're doing is taking a shotgun blast to a mythical problem that requires a BB gun solution. What will ultimately happen is that families living in New Dutch Haven and our friends and guests will foot the bill for a problem that simply does not exist. We did a survey that will or has been presented to you, showing that only a handful of residents want permitted parking enforced here. I hereby request that you discontinue the mistaken program of permit parking in New Dutch Haven. It is not needed, not wanted, and puts an added burden upon the families living here, our friends and guests. Sincerely, Stanley Davidson. And for myself, as I mentioned, I've been living here since 1992, have never had a problem with parking, have never seen the permit parking signs enforced, and I don't want them to be. We really don't have a problem. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Okay, next, George. George Townsend?
The other half of the team. I'm speaking about the new permit parking requirements in the New Dutch Haven neighborhood. And I'm George Townsend. I live on Mendorah Street in New Dutch Haven. We moved there in May of 1992 and have lived there continuously since. Linda and I own our house. What is New Dutch Haven? It's a group of single-family houses surrounded by, bounded by Antietam, Mendorah, Bennington, and the section of Howard between the base boundary and Bennington. It contains 159 residences. It is a physically separate neighborhood from the neighborhood to the west, which I think is Carrier Row, right? And it is the eastmost neighborhood in Los Alamos. So, we're kind of off by ourselves, and we are physically separate. There's only one way in. There's been a permit parking sign or the light pole directly in front of my house since May of 92. It has never been enforced. We heard about the new permit parking law by word of mouth. Since some residents, and we can supply a list of names if you want us to, surveyed 112 separate homes in New Dutch Haven to get their opinion on the new parking permit program. That's 112 out of 159 homes. And Mark will give you some detailed worksheets for those survey results. Two residents said they were opposed to on-street parking, mostly for visibility. And they are in favor of the parking permit restrictions. 98% of the people that we talked to are opposed to restrictions on on-street parking. So, please honor the wishes of the overwhelming majority of the New Dutch Haven residents and remove New Dutch Haven from these requirements. Since New Dutch Haven is physically separate from adjoining neighborhoods, this should not be difficult. And would you please have the permit parking sign removed from the light pole in front of my house? Because it's been there for, since 1992, and it's kind of a waste. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Mark Lindholm.
Good evening, councilmembers and staff. My name is Mark Lindholm. My lovely wife, Kathy, and I have been residents of New Dutch Haven for the past 40 years. Living here has given us an opportunity to raise a family and enjoy a comfortable quality of life. We are now concerned that that quality of life is being impacted by decisions being made without adequate resident input. Approximately one year ago, or one month ago, I read a post on the Nextdoor site in which a resident of Carrier Row was questioning the parking permit requirement. I assumed that that permit program was starting in that area of the city. Later that very same day, I had a visitor to our home. One of the visitors showed up, showed me a warning notice about the required parking permit program that was going to begin in New Dutch Haven on October 1st. I was totally surprised to learn about this program and started asking my neighbors if they knew anything about it. No one knew about the parking permit program or the survey that the program was based on. Some neighbors and myself decided to survey the New Dutch Haven neighborhood. We asked the residents the following four questions. Have you experienced parking problems on your street in New Dutch Haven? Are you aware of the new required permit parking program in New Dutch Haven? Did you know that anyone parking without a permit will receive a $40 citation? And knowing that, it will be enforced. Are you in favor of the parking program in New Dutch Haven? In one week, we completed a survey of 120 homes in New Dutch Haven. We surveyed residents on all six streets of New Dutch Haven. The response rate that we got was basically 75%. We would be happy to provide you with raw data if you want it. I'm sure that it is much higher percentage of response than the city survey that was done this year. To summarize the key findings, four residents said they have experienced parking problems. 150 residents are opposed to the parking permit program, which equals 97% of the residents surveyed. If you care to have a survey all of New Dutch Haven, we'd be happy to do that and provide you with those figures. If there is a parking problem in New Dutch Haven, it appears that the residents do not see that a parking permit problem, or a parking permit program will solve it. By forcing a parking permit program on the residents of New Dutch Haven...
Please continue. Please continue.
...based on a woefully flawed and inadequate survey, when the residents don't see that there's a parking problem, is creating resentment and mistrust. We saved you $26,000 from the other survey that you're going to be doing.
Sure, if you can wrap up, though. I'd appreciate if you could wrap up. You've already exceeded the five minutes.
Okay. We have solid data that reflects the thoughts of New Dutch Haven. Councilman Hasselbrink, you have gone to great lengths to promote community activities in Los Alamos. You support many efforts to build community spirit. Here's an opportunity to further support the community of New Dutch Haven. Members of the city council, you have an opportunity to undo a program that the residents of New Dutch Haven don't see a need for. The residents of Los Alamos put their trust in you to arrive at solutions to city problems that do not create undue burdens on them or diminish the quality of life that is enjoyed here. Since most of the residents of New Dutch Haven don't think there is a parking problem, we ask that you stop the parking permit program and not implement this ineffective and costly program. By doing that, you will demonstrate to the citizens of Los Alamos that you are responsive to their interests and have a genuine desire to support their quest to provide a quality life for them and their families. Thank you for your consideration of what was shared tonight.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker we have is Dwayne Kelly. Oh, is it? Dwayne, okay. Thank you for being here.
Hello, mayor and councilmembers, and also all of you. I'm really thankful that we can be here. My name is Dwayne Kelly. I'm from the Gracias Music Foundation. And we focus on giving students opportunities to receive gifts for music through scholarships, through instruments, any way to give their ambition strength. And so, our organization is very amazing. We also provide, we also provide performances. We provide all types of community services for youth, and also city hall, and also we do cultural performances. We do language classes, mindset, mindset programs for the officers, firefighters. And we also hold English camps internationally in different countries. And we also want to expand with the city of Los Alamos. We believe that we can provide a lot for the city here. And we believe that music is change. Music helps people. And so, one of, one of the, one of the programs that we have that's coming up is called the Gracias Christmas Cantada. And we're trying to invite all of you, also all of you here, to this. It's not in Los Alamos. It's in Long Beach. But we believe that we can bring this program here next year, or maybe the year after. So, actually, the Gracias Christmas Cantada, it actually changes a lot of people. I see, as I... I see, as I'm like the usher for this program, I see people, as they come in, they're complaining about all things like parking, or even death, or all types of things. But as they walk out, they have bright and radiant smiles. Actually, this concert produces joy for them. And we believe that this can bring joy to your city as well. And so, I have a crest, a request. I would like to invite all of you to come and see this performance and see what it's doing for the city of Long Beach and also for the city of LA. We want to bring that here to you guys. And also, we want to work and collaborate with the city here. So, we have all the information, as you see on your desk, and also the flyer as well. And I will also give everyone a flyer as well. We hope to bring this to you guys. And our motto is "We Bring the Joy to You," and we believe that we will bring that joy to all of you. Thank you.
Before you go, Mr. Kelly, could you give the dates of the performance? I think they're coming up in December. And then, do you have a website as well?
Yes.
Okay.
The dates are September 29th. It's Sunday. It's a 3:00 PM and 7:00 PM show. And there's a VIP reception at 5:00 PM, and we'd like you guys to come to that. It's going to be at the Terrace Theater in Long Beach. And there is a website. It's called graciasmusicfoundation.org. Once again, graciasmusicfoundation.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have, I think this is a combination, is it Richard Baldwin and Ginny Gary? Okay, please.
Hi, I'm Ginny Gary. I work at Los Alamos Medical Center. I'm a registered nurse. Thank you for letting us be here. And then, we also have a couple people supporting us, a couple nurses and patients' families. I've worked at Los Alamos for 39 years, and I've been a registered nurse for 35. I grew up in Rosmar, as did my husband, and my children were both born at the hospital. So I'm going to introduce Rick Baldwin, who is my coworker at Los Alamos. I recognize you.
Thank you. My name is Rick Baldwin. I'm an inpatient intensive care nurse. And some of you here may know me as a nurse. I'm a resident of Los Alamos. I've been living and working here for better than 12 years. I'm a Boy Scout counselor with Troop 642, North Seal Beach, Los Alamos. A night community member at St. Joseph's. I have father of two sons who went to Hopkinson, then Oak, now Los Al High. They both played AYSO here, and they both went and played baseball at St. Hedwigs. And this is my home. And working at the hospital, this is my community hospital. And I've seen it go through a lot of changes, and most recently, you may be aware, they closed our GRO psych unit. And just this past February, they closed our OB-GYN, or OB newborn nursery, so you can no longer have babies there. If you, we have to bypass and go to another city if you need that, we can no longer deal with that. Now, we have more medical rooms. Were you aware of this, what was going on at the hospital? I don't know if you're aware of all these changes that we've gone through. So no longer, now we have more medical rooms. Now, with current management, the media and my neighbors are being told that we're going on strike and it's all about money. And I'm here to tell you, it's not about money. It's about patient care and safety. And I wanted to have my chance to explain to you what's going on, at least from our side, then you can make an informed decision on your own. The union is asking for cost of living raise, and negotiations have been going on for nearly a year, and we still have come to no resolve. And if they really did care about our patients, they would have already dealt with this fairly. This wouldn't have dragged on so long. That's where we're at now. We're asking for help. We want you to be aware of what's going on in your community. What we're asking for is no different from any other hospital. We're asking to have a secretary to answer the phone. The nurses are the secretary. We're asking for CNAs to help clean our patients, turn our patients with incontinence care, prevent them from getting pressure ulcers. The nurses are the CNAs. We're asking for a break nurse to give us a break. I work 12-hour shifts. And in that 12-hour shifts, sometimes I can't even go to the restroom. There's nobody to watch my patients. Understand, they're critical. You can't just walk away, hang on a minute, don't die while I go to the bathroom. In addition to this, we're asking for someone to cover our breaks so I can get a lunch. Now, they'll say that I got my lunch, but when you start at 7:00 in the morning and they're offering you a lunch at 4:00 or later in the afternoon, believe me, that's not really lunch. Or, we're asking for a resource nurse, another nurse that can come in and just help us with the really critical patients. Or a difficult patient who's maybe got dementia, Alzheimer's, or had a brain injury where they're constantly trying to get out of bed. And you need to have someone sitting there saying, hey, this is your brother, your grandmother, your mother, whoever. It's okay, you're in the hospital, your family knows you're here, keep your legs in bed so they don't fall out of bed. Because we have had some real safety issues because we don't have the help. They have cut us beyond bare bones. Now, obviously, we feel like they're putting profits before people. Our patients and nursing staff are struggling, we need help. The public helped to support our nurses at Los Alamos Medical Center. But keep in mind, this isn't just our hospital doing this, it's all the tenant hospitals. We, from here, from Florida, Arizona, California, and Texas. We have 6,200 nurses going out. Now, you may be thinking, this strike's going to hurt our patients. Okay, this is what's going on. We've gave a 10-day notice. When they didn't show up to our last negotiation, they canceled it. They didn't even show up. So what they've done is they hired a team to come in, and the nurses that are working strike day, if they don't come into work and they, for the strike, they're going to not allow them to work for four more days. So they've hired a team to come in, and they are so well-prepared that not only are they not going to let those nurses work that day, they're going to force them to not work for four more days. But however, if you're not working that day and you don't show up the next day in support of your nurses, then you're liable for patient care.
So a few more, you know, a few more moments?
They're being split up. So, keep in mind that tenant reported that they paid out a total of $8 million in penalties from 2016 to 2018. And that's for missed meals and breaks in our eight California hospitals. That's including Los Alamos. In 2018 alone, the nurses reported 57,000 missed breaks, which is a 20% increase since 2016. Research shows that adequate rest, meals, and breaks, we get fatigued, greater risk of patient injuries and medical errors. I, myself, have had kidney stones at work. I sprained my ankle with a combative patient. These are the situations we're working in. And I had to go to the emergency room, and our fantastic emergency room was every day just pulling it together to make things happen. The nurses are really working hard. So you don't necessarily see this as a patient or family member, what's going on behind all this. But we're putting ourselves at risk, and this is unacceptable. We need help. And I'm just grateful that you gave me an opportunity to talk and hear from the nurses. I'm here, I have two former patients, family members here, who've, here to support us, as well as some of our other nurses. I asked the nurses, and I called today, I could get 400 nurses in here to show that we were, 98% of them voted for this strike. Not just us here, but over 90%, and all of the tenant hospitals. This is a problem with all of them, and it's a problem in your community. And I'm asking, this Friday, we're going to have a rally at 12 noon, you're all invited. I would really appreciate if any and all of you would show up and help support us. That's what I'm asking for today. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the blue cards, I guess, if they're, oh, I'm sorry. Please, please come on forward, Gary. We have...
They said you didn't need a blue card.
Yeah, you don't.
Probably because Richard helped me out. Anyway, it's an honor to be here today with you, my former public servant, or I'm the former public servant. I represented Los Alamos, the OCT Board of Directors, and as you know, Los Alamos and Seal Beach work very closely together on everything.
Could you identify yourself, please?
Ah, Gary Miller. And I'm here tonight, basically, I talked to Rick late in the day. Rick's a great nurse. My wife had AFib's, 174 heart rate one night, and he went in and saved her. And, try to make this, my wife actually passed away in May after 14 months fighting cancer at Los Alamos Hospital, but she'd been there and away, home and back. And in my opinion, she died because of a nurse's error. And not these nurses, not Los Alamos's nurses, but nurses are important, very important. Rick is an outstanding, Mrs. Gary, Quinn, all these nurses did a great job for Sharon at Los Al. There are great nurses at Los Alamos. I can assure you, as you all know, I'm not shy about telling you my opinion of things. And they have great nurses there. One of the problems they have, my wife went into ICU in July of 19, excuse me, 2018, and the CNAs went away shortly after that. A CNA is somebody that comes in and helps the nurse clean your, clean the patients or whatever. One night, my nurse had to go as far as catching an ER nurse going by and ask her if she would help because they were so busy. One night, I spent three hours holding a bear hugger over my wife, who had a 94 body temperature, because there was nobody else to do it. I stood there, and it's backaching business, I'll tell you, but we bought her back, she had that twice. Also, this resource nurse, or as Rick, I don't remember exactly what nurse says, but there's the nurse that gives breaks, helps out other nurses, and when they're not there, then it falls on the charge nurse, which is the supervisor, and the care of the patients goes downhill. If one thing, Los Alamos needs more full-time nurses, less of these traveling nurses, less of these registry nurses. They're good for, you know, taking the hump off of the load, but they need a higher level of more nurses, based on my experience. I was there eight months at Los Al, off and on. Once for seven months, once for a couple weeks, and once for the last two weeks of my wife's life. ICU was great. They did a good job there. Location's a problem. When they try to stretch the staff, and they have, when I was on the floor, the floor is the main hospital. My wife's nurse, who was an RN, could have been, had four patients, and it could have been 50 feet away and around the corner. I kept pushing, well, let's get them all together. And sometimes in ICU, they'd be at the other end of ICU, but trust me, I let them know what I thought of that, and they corrected the issue. Again, I'm not shy. I'm telling you, Los Alamos is a good hospital, I'd like to see it bigger. As I mentioned to one of you, that when I first went in there, they said, I said, I would like to see this hospital bigger, and they said, well, it's the city's fault. So I called your former councilman Troy Edgar, and he says, no. He said, we've done everything we can for them, we'll let them go. So it really falls back on tenant, again, that they're not expanding the hospital. And you end up at this hospital. So often, when you get emergency calls, you go there. Los Alamos is your hospital, unless you get lucky enough, or not lucky enough, but you go to Long Beach if you got, if you don't have a serious, real serious problem. You come here when you have a real serious problem, for sure. Again, I've been retired from December 2016, I've not been to a council meeting, but when Rick mentioned this to me today, I think it's important. I hope the community, as well as the council, can support the nurses. It's your care, trust me. I didn't plan on my wife being in that hospital, I didn't plan on being there for 18 months. I went in morning, noon, and night. So I knew the nurses. I knew all, I knew all these nurses in ICU, every one of them, because she was in ICU seven months. Because she just had one issue after another. She had a distended stomach, she had bleeding ulcers. One doctor said, let her die, and the other doctor said, I'll save her, he saved her. She had pneumonia, she had excessive radiation. Another thing that happened is we ran out of Medicare in November of last year. But luckily, I have a policy with Blue Shield where they take over, but they were a real pain. Everything's dollars and cents, more or less, not so much the patient as dollars and cents. Again, I urge the community to support the nurses on this issue, because I've been there, I know the shortages, I've seen the shortages, I've had to fill in in the shortages as an advocate for my wife. And they're all good nurses over there, and if we have more of their types there, and there are a lot of good people there. So even the charge nurses, who are the supervisors, are very good, very cooperative. Trust me, I asked for Rick many times, as he knows. When you find a good nurse, you want them, and the other nurses are good, but Rick and I just had the right chemistry. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, next up, Larry Andre.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, council, staff. Don't want to beat a dead horse on this parking permit issue. It appears that, I think you're getting the message, but I just wanted to relay a couple of things. I've been in the city 11, approximately 11 years as well. I've never spoken at a council meeting, because I think you guys do a great job, and there has been no need for me to come and speak at a council meeting until now. I did feel it necessary. Somebody dropped off a petition at my house and asked if I would help, and I said I absolutely would, because the reason I found out about this program was after I put a note on my son's vehicle, because we couldn't get it started for Street Sweeper, so I knew I was good there. I came home to a warning on the bus, which is fine, guess that's the way they decided to get the word out. But seven days later, I got the postcard in the mail about the program. So it was kind of backwards, in my opinion. I didn't really take kindly to this, even though it was just a warning. I knew I wasn't going to get a ticket. It was like, didn't make sense. This should have come way before the warning. Parking permit signs have been there, there has not been an issue. I went ahead and took the petition around and got some people to sign it, and I stopped doing it because Mark had gone out and we were kind of duplicating efforts. So he was doing the survey, I found out, I stopped on the petition. But the bottom line on the petition is, I went through and of all the signatures that I've got, there were two houses that really didn't care one way or the other. They weren't necessarily, they really didn't care. They were fine with having it, but it wasn't a big deal. Everybody else that I went to was opposed to the parking permit program. And basically, what they said is, just leave it as is. They weren't concerned about pulling signs out. In most people's opinion, it's a waste of time, money, and resources. Leave the signs. If there's any riffraff that does happen to ever come in and they see a sign, maybe they won't park there. If five years down the road, something happens in Cypress and they get rid of the track and we see that there's a need for it, the signs are there. We don't have to redo it. We don't have to add signs. We don't have to waste the money to pull the signs. Leave them. Just do what you've been doing for the last 20, 30 years, whatever it is, and not enforce the program. It hasn't been enforced since I've been there, up until now with this warning, but the whole reason that it went in in the first place, everybody knows it's the racetrack, but the reason that it went in was because they were charging for parking at the racetrack. People were trying to avoid the parking, paying parking, and were parking in New Dutch Haven. About a month after the program was implemented, the parking went away. And guess what? So did the problem. It hasn't existed since. Traffic Commission sent out a survey. Most of the people unfortunately said they did not get the survey. We did get the survey, we filled it out, we sent it in, gave our two cents. But the majority of the people obviously saying, not knowing about the survey, but they still, still didn't want, want the program. So, you've got all the data, it's overwhelming that response that people do not want this program. I hope that you take a second evaluation at it, take a look at it, and make a decision accordingly. I guess, I don't know if you can actually answer any questions about it, but what would be the next step after this, since it's a non-agendized item at this point?
You serve on the planning commission, right, Larry? So you know we don't have an interchange, right?
Correct.
So we can talk offline.
I'll just throw it out there, hopefully that they can be put on the agenda so that it can be readdressed, or with the Traffic Commission even. Traffic Commission actually made a recommendation to not enforce it into New Dutch Haven, and council, I believe, reversed that and put it in as all five neighborhoods.
Well, if I may, just, if I, and again, your time's kind of coming up, but I know when we were looking at Los Al Boulevard and putting time parking on there, and having a sign on the wall or on a post and not enforcing it is really bad practice.
Then remove it.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I was just trying to save the money.
No, but again...
If you want to remove them, hey, trust me, nobody will be upset with you removing it.
So I think in terms of solution, we will rely on the Traffic Commission to actually do their due diligence, and then it'll bring it back to us for further action at this point, okay?
Perfect. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Next, we have Sandra Griffin.
Hi, my name is Sandra Griffin. I live on Tripoli in Los Alamos. My mother and stepfather bought their home in 1974. I'm living there, and I have their home now since they passed. I've never been to a city council meeting before, but I know you, just based upon your information in the newspaper and such. So I'm here about the parking permits. Like my comrades behind me, I am very much against them. I live, again, on Tripoli, which is New Dutch Haven. We don't need them, we've never needed them. I don't know who has been pushing this issue, but I also feel like it's kind of nickel-and-diming people to charge them $40 or more for parking in front of their own home. And then there's the family members, and the gardeners, and contractors and such. So I'm asking that you pretty much table it and kill it. Please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Frank Chenekki.
Hi, how are you? I'll make this quick. I'm here in support of my neighbors. I live in New Dutch Haven on Antietam. I've been there five years exactly this month. I came from Seal Beach, where we had parking stickers, and being a car guy, it's a hassle, it's a nuisance. It's a nuisance. We always lost our passes. It just, I get it there at the beach, but here, on Antietam, I haven't seen, with the exception of somebody having a party or something and, and the neighbors letting everybody know, we have not had a parking problem. We'd be the first street affected on Antietam from the, uh, starting gate and/or, uh, the, the racetrack, so I, I just feel like we're, we're trying to fix a problem that doesn't exist, so, uh, hopefully you guys will reconsider. Uh, I personally have several cars because I'm into classic cars and, and I've been down that path before, so I'm here to support my neighbors. They've all been, always been very respectful. If they have a party, we know, you know, we know that we're going to have a crowd, a crowded street. We know that there're going to be excessive parking, but it's only for a few short, uh, hours a couple of times a year. And also, as a first responder, uh, I've been in the area here for a couple decades in Los Alamedos Hospital. I gotta stand behind this guy. They're very good, and, you know, much respect to these guys. So that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, last one I have is Frank Foreman.
Good evening. I'm also a New Dutch Haven resident. I've been there since August of nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, in that time, there's been traffic, Fourth of July, until law enforcement cracked down and, and, and enforced the no fireworks, which was not allowed to begin with. We lost all the parties that happened every single, uh, Fourth of July. Airshow, you'd get a, a bunch of cars, or the occasional party. It's, there's not really any traffic that comes in that neighborhood. Um, if there's an issue, I also lived in Seal Beach prior to moving here. We had to have permits. Very transient community of visitors, as well as the, uh, the number of apartments trying to keep it. We don't have that issue within our area. Back in, I'd say probably fifteen years ago, ten years ago, uh, they were, we were complaining about the speed on Howard. You had about sixty mile an hour racing going down the street, and the Traffic Commission went ahead and wanted to put stop signs in. There are stop signs they wanted to place on the nor, on the southbound, uh, direction of Bennington, as well as the other streets that fed into Howard. We could, we talked to the Traffic Commission at that time, said that may stop cars from coming in, but doesn't stop the, uh, speed going there. Traffic Commission was very responsive, and they added stop signs, uh, that handled east-west traffic and actually stopped the problem with it. So they were very responsive to our concerns at that time. I'm hoping that you're responsive to our concerns right now. There's no need for that, single-family residences, and then that's all I really have to say on that. And as it goes for Rick, uh, been a firefighter for twenty-seven years, used to take, uh, patients to the hospital, and definitely support the issues that they're dealing with as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that's all the blue cards. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on any matter? Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, uh, City Council staff. Uh, my name is Rob Stevens. Um, uh, still part of the Carrier Row. Um, longtime resident. Grew up on Lexington since nineteen forty-eight, and then moved to Bunker Hill in seventy-one, still there. So I've been on the hill for quite a while. Um, we came to the Traffic Commission meeting on the eleventh. Um, probably twenty of the neighbors. We've done the petition. They were very helpful. Uh, they told us all that was going on, how to remedy the situation. Um, I think it's in the works. Um, we don't want it, um, and I'm sure other people don't want it. There were, but we were told about the meeting. We actually watched the workshop you guys had with the Traffic Commission, and they were right on the money. The little cards don't get their attention, the big slap, like he said, gets your attention. So those notices, as you've noticed, got everybody's attention. So I just wanted to say, the Traffic Commission, they did a wonderful job, so we're very happy with, uh, what's going to happen. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Okay, is there anybody? Oh, please come forward. Thank you for being here.
I just went to try to get my permits and was told it's seven-thirty to five-thirty. So, um, I'm in opposition of the parking. I came last Wednesday to the, um, Traffic Commission meeting to express my disapproval of enforcing it, and nobody in the audience last Wednesday was for it. Unfortunately, I was not with the group that had the twenty, whatever it is, signatures. I was the only one from my street that was here, and when I asked, so where does that leave me? Uh, he said, pretty much nowhere. So.
Wouldn't mind if you, you care to identify yourself and what street you're on?
I'm Julie Decker, and I live on Saratoga.
Okay, thank you.
I'm kind of in the middle of the street, and, um, one of my neighbors, when I talked to her after that meeting, she said, that was started because there was a business on the corner of Saratoga and, uh, Cotella, but that's a different business now, and, um, people that lived closer to it are different people. The houses have been sold. So some of us just feel like it's not necessary at all. Um, so really, that's all I want. I just, I'm opposed to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we'll go ahead and close oral communications, and I want to thank you all for speaking. I really appreciate the input. Um, I think it is following the process. I do thank, uh, Mr. Stevens for noting that, so we're waiting to see what happens at the Traffic Commission when they deal with this. I know we've had a few, uh, go-arounds with them, and I know they're handling it, uh, the best way they feel, you know, that's helpful to the community. So thank you for appearing in front of the, uh, Commission, Traffic Commission, as well as appearing for the council here. So thank you all. Okay, to us, council announcements. Is there somebody, I remember, what, seven, that wishes to go first? But, uh, Bean, you ready or getting your notes together?
Uh, my notes are at home.
Okay.
And I plan to defer to you for the report on the Washington trip, but I will get those notes into the city clerks if they're recorded.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. I have a ton. I attended, along with council member Murphy and, uh, city staff, the Wahoos Ribbon Cutting Ceremony with the Los Al Chamber of Commerce, which was a really nice event. Um, and we have, uh, some, uh, well, let me go back. I attended the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District Meeting last month, and we have a meeting coming up this Thursday as well. Uh, you may have seen some news reports. You may have experienced some additional biting going on. There's a significant increase in the number of mosquitoes throughout the county, um, and there's a significant increase in the number of West Nile virus positive tests that have, uh, that have occurred, um, sort of in the central and north, uh, county area. Uh, recently, they found eighteen positive West Nile virus mosquito samples in Anaheim, Buena Park, Fulton, and Stanton, uh, bringing the total number of samples to a hundred and twelve in those cities just this year. Um, so there's an increased, uh, risk for residents. Hopefully, we don't, uh, see West Nile here in Los Alamedos, but, uh, just a reminder to everyone to do what you can to avoid, uh, making it easy for mosquitoes to breed where you live. You know, dump standing water, uh, you know, wear long sleeves at dusk and dawn, although we have the daytime biters, now the eighties mosquitoes, so, um, you know, you want to make sure you have screens on your house or closed and in good repair, and, and you're wearing mosquito repellent, um, whenever you can. Um, that's it for, for me for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council member Hasselbrink?
Um, I attended the Hail to the Heroes concert, um, with the mayor of the Pacific Symphony, um, and this was, the Pacific Symphony honored all of our veterans and servicemen and first responders. Uh, Greenwood was there, um, singing. We had a conductor from World War Two, uh, because the conductor of the Pacific Symphony didn't feel worthy to be able to conduct some of the songs, like the Battle Hymn of the Republic and some of the things. So it was, it was a very, very moving concert. It was years in the making, and it was just absolute perfection. Um, I also attended Honoring Our Fallen, um, the Golden Boots Awards Dinner, uh, this last Saturday night, also at the mayor. Uh, this is an organization, uh, run by Laura Herzog, a local community member, and she handles all of the, um, logistics when a fallen soldier comes home for, for burial, and also all the aftermath with the families, the wives, the mothers, the childrens, and make sure that they're taken care of and have a support group around them, um, for, for their support. Um, at OCFA, we welcomed Garden Grove officially. They were at their first meeting a couple of weeks ago, and council member John O'Neill is the OCFA rep for Garden Grove, and they're very excited to be there, and the whole, uh, council was there, um, for their first meeting, which was great. Um, excuse me, a couple of weeks ago, the local thirty-six, thirty-one at OCFA, um, did a fire ops day where they invited board members to come and actually play firefighter for a day. Um, it almost killed me, um, but I found a career that I have no desire to ever do, and with the respect that I have for first responders, this took it to a whole new level. We were in turnouts with our hundred-and-fifty-pound oxygen and everything breathing apparatus on. We were crawling through a burning building and trying to drag a victim out while not catching on fire. Um, it was an interesting task, and then we went over and took the jaws of life and took apart a car, and, um, then went over to the hose station and tried to put out a fire and was unsuccessful at all of them. So, um, thank you for first responders to do what you do, because I'm pretty horrible at it, and, um, but it was a great exercise because a lot of times at board members, um, these operations just become numbers on a spreadsheet, and, um, we forget the people and the physical drains that it has on these people and the emotions and the split-second decisions that they're having to make. In pitch black, it, it was just, there was a lot going on, so, um, I appreciate the thirty-six, thirty-one for doing that and allowing the board members to come in and just get a glimpse, just for a few hours. It probably took me about four days to recover from that, um, so thank you very much for what you do. Um, and I'm also going to give a sneak preview. Um, on Monday, September th- twenty-third at ten AM, we're going to be having a press conference over at Joint Forces Training Base with OCFA. We are going to be introducing a new high-tech wildfire tool. Um, it's bigger than a breadbox, but that is about as much as I can say about it, but it will be a tool that will be serving all five counties in Southern California, and, uh, JFTB and OCFA have just become terrific partners and moving forward in a lot of the endeavors that they're going to be able to do with fighting fires throughout the county and also throughout the state, and it's, you know, a lot of this is starting to be housed at JFTB, and so I just, I, I love those two organizations coming together and seeing what we can do. Um, and with that, that's it.
Thank you. Mayor Potem?
Thank you. Besides my normal committee assignments, I was able to attend the grand opening of Wahoos, uh, met the founder and was able to thank him for bringing his iconic brand to Los Alamedos. I was also able to attend the State of the School District, find out the wonderful things our good partners are preparing for the future. Was able to go to the police promotions, which much to my surprise lasted less than an hour, which I assume meant the chief had somewhere else to be later on. Um, and, and Les, I'd like to ask that we, you get with me and we do a review of the building laws and the penalties involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. So, um, uh, like council member Hasselbrink said, we attended the Hail to the Heroes, and it was truly a moving experience, and then, um, they did have a VIP reception in front of Heroes Hall, and, uh, having our city represented there was really kind of, um, one of those nice things. Not too many cities attended, um, but, uh, we stepped up and did that, and, um, we, uh, this is all on our own dime. We didn't, uh, have the city pay for any of this, so we went and attended the concert, and again, just fabulous night. Um, let's see, the other thing on the, um, what council member Murphy was talking about, so I was invited to the White House again. I went last year, uh, to participate in their state, uh, leadership days, and last year it was three states, Alaska, Hawaii, and, um, California. This year it was seven states, and it was pretty much the Western United States except for Alaska. And, um, some statistics from that, uh, so far, this was the seventh out of ten state leadership days, but there had been three thousand seven hundred and fifty-three people attending. Uh, two thousand four, two thousand and four of them were county officials, three hundred and seventy-five of those were state legislators, um, law enforcement, uh, officials were a hundred and eighteen, and city officials were a hundred and seventy-six. So council member, um, Gross, myself, and then Mayor Stacy Berry from Cypress, we were three of those a hundred and seventy-six, um, local, uh, city officials that attended. Now, this administration was really interesting, and it was, uh, it was meant to be like four hours. I think they jammed five hours into it, and we stayed, uh, a bit extra, and there were panels and there were, um, speakers, and, uh, I think the, the winner to me was the drug czar, and Dean helped me out. That was, uh, Jim Carroll.
Correct.
Jim Carroll was, was really funny. He went off script and he was explaining what the, uh, that they're doing to combat. He, and he didn't call it opioid. He called it addiction problems because opioids might be the, the thing that they're addicted to, but he's trying to treat them in a way that it is, catches it before they go to prison, so if they're going to seek treatment, treat them before they, uh, go into a environment that probably makes it really hard to, um, get care after they leave. But he was very entertaining and very informative. The other one was Bernhardt, uh, Secretary Bernhardt, who is the Department of the Interior. And there were a lot of ranchers there, um, from Colorado, New Mexico, and they have issues with water, with grazing and, and what have you, and they're very receptive, and, and they had an answer. They were trying to work these things, but working through all the bureaucracy. And I think that the main thing that I walked away with a greater appreciation for this administration is, they gave us a list of all the intergovernmental contacts that we ever needed. I gave it to my colleagues here. I gave it to the city manager to distribute to his colleagues, city attorney to distribute to his colleagues. This administration wants to hear from us, and so I think, um, members of the public, you know, your council members are here, if there's something that you think needs to be handled at the, um, federal level, please do not hesitate to call me or, or send an emails, and we'll look into it and try and reach out to the right agency, because the guy in the White House wants to solve our problems, and he's, they're asking us to share with them their, our problems so they can help to, uh, provide solutions. So, uh, it, it was really an enlightening experience. I walk away with a greater appreciation for what is, you know, the problems that we have, and, and, you know, we have a bureaucracy here that starts at the very top and works all the way down to the, the city and, and the school level, and we're just trying to solve it, uh, the best we can, but we have limited resources. So here's somebody with a lot more resources that wants to solve problems, and they need to understand those, so please, um, remember that when you're, have, have issues and worries, um, there is somebody at the federal level that wants to understand that as well. But I don't know, um, council member Gross, you want to add anything to this?
No, it was very, uh, informative, um, and, and, and really down-to-earth. Uh, Vice President Pence popped in, which threw their schedule off, um, but it was a, a very enlightening opportunity to, to discuss issues. Were a lot of people that were there were commissioners from more of the cattle and, and open land areas who also have problems, water being one of them, and, uh, they were genuine in the process. There wasn't, uh, wasn't an effort to put on face in the process and like make promises. So I'm, I'm encouraged by the opportunity. I appreciate the mayor for including me. Did have one other comment that I would like to make. You know, we've, we've been addressing the financial sustainment of the city over the last several months, actually longer than that, for, uh, some members of the council. And, uh, back in, in June, I believe it was, we did a rollout of a, of a PowerPoint presentation to the Chamber of Commerce and gave them an opportunity to kind of understand, uh, what the city is facing. It's a little unique because, um, we've got some real severe financial problems that we're going to have to address, none the least of which is pensions, um, a little bit on the homeless, and a lack of revenue coming in from, from the state. The state has taken a lot of money away from us. Um, we're going to do those now in, in the various communities. There's five sessions slated. There's five sessions slated. The first one is this Wednesday night at the community center at, I believe, 6 o'clock. Then Saturday will be one at Orville Lewis Park down in the Highlands area.
Are you kind of, just going to tell us what the city manager is going to tell us?
Yeah, I'm stealing his thunder. The point being is, is that I think it's an opportunity for the citizens now to step forward to help us and get engaged. So I will let the city manager move forward.
Thank you. And then I guess one last thing on this Washington DC trip. And then this was all done on our own resources. We did not use any city funds. And the only thing I did use of the city was our city clerk, Wendy Quintinar, who's tried to set up some meetings with our local congressman. And she set up a meeting with Congressman Harley Rudis' staff, which I met with them. And then she tried the other three, Cisneros, Lotholz, and Correa. So thank you, Wendy, for that. And I just want to let you know, I did go into Lotholz's office and I did happen to run into him. So I did say hi, at least good morning, and then, you know, he was busy, but at least I got to pay him a visit and I saw our local congressman and I guess receptionist is a Griffin, graduated from the high school there, so it was really nice to have someone from home. With that, I'll go ahead and that's the rest of my comments and I'll move on to the, unless there's anything else, then you go back. Okay, on to number eight, city manager, items from city manager.
Honorable Mayor, council members, I just had one item and council member Gross was mentioning that, and that is that the city's in the effort of trying to garner feedback from its residents with regards to the physical sustainability efforts that have been underway for quite some time. And we have strategically identified five community meetings that will be conducted over the next several weeks. As was mentioned, the first one happening this Wednesday at our community center. We also have one on Saturday at Orville Lewis Park and three other additional ones that will occur during the month of October and again, at various times and locations. And again, our interest is to provide some basic background information with regards to the work that's been conducted and the facts associated with that, very similar to what was presented to the Chamber of Commerce in June. And more importantly than talking, we want to listen. That's really our key point. We want to hear from the community and get some good constructive feedback with regards to this effort that's underway. If residents are unable to come to any of those five meetings, there is a webpage set up with information available there and we would welcome anybody that would like to provide comment at any time as we venture forward, again, over the next six to eight weeks with that. So again, we do have a webpage dedicated to this information. Would encourage residents to visit that and we hope to see many of them at these five community meetings coming up. That concludes my report.
If I may have, I do have a question about the upcoming dance that my wife signed me up for.
Family dance?
I would defer to Emma Noda to answer that.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you for that lead-in. We'd like to invite the community out to the Memorial Care Miller Children and Women's Hospital, Long Beach, Los Alamos Family Dance on Saturday, September 28th, from 6:00 to 9:00 at Oak Middle School Gym. It is a fundraiser for the elementary schools. 50% of the ticket proceeds go to the school of your choice. And we invite everyone from grandmas and grandpas, uncles and aunts. It's open to the entire family. We have a senior prom that takes place in May, so this is more like a family prom. Activities include a video game track, photo booth, caricatures, glitter tattoos, balloon twisting, heavy appetizers, a silent auction, a live DJ, and dancing. So please purchase your tickets at cityoflosalmitos.org. Thank you.
Is it black tie?
It's dressed to impress.
Ah, okay.
What exactly are heavy appetizers?
It means...
Hungry kids?
You'll be fed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move on to item number nine, the warrants. Is there a motion to approve?
She'll move.
Murphy, Hasselbrink, roll call, please.
Mayor Kusamoto.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Murphy.
Aye.
Council member Chirko.
Aye.
Council member Gross.
Aye.
Council member Hasselbrink.
Aye.
Okay, on to number 10, consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. Is there anything that needs to be pulled? Seeing none, is there a motion? Murphy?
Second.
Chirko. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Have none? Passes unanimously. On to 11. That will be, let's see, provide direction of voting delegate. I guess that'd be to you, Wendy. Can we have a report, please?
This item tonight is providing voting direction to our 2019 League of California Cities Annual Conference that is being held in October in Long Beach. Council member Dean Gross has been designated as the voting delegate with Mayor Kusamoto and council member Hasselbrink as our alternatives. There have only been two resolutions that were submitted for consideration. The first one is, I'm sorry, there's a summary of them in your staff report. Did you want me to go through those or are you...
Dean, do you have any questions on that in terms of the direction?
No.
Okay. Is there any, I guess...
I'm at the will of the council.
Yeah, but do you have a recommendation, support or oppose the resolutions?
I was looking for direction from my colleagues.
Okay.
Okay. I would move to support both resolutions.
All right. So Chirko, any discussions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Opposed, none? Okay, so Dean, you got to clearly suppose, support both resolutions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, next one is, I'll get back to my agenda. Close session. A closed session. Okay, city attorney, if you wouldn't mind, taking us into closed session.
Thank you, Mayor.